Testing, testing. All right. Good deal. So if I could have my Public Works folks, y'all come on up. Y'all come on up here. This is y'all's time. Yep. All right. All right. And I'm gonna step right up in here. There we go. All right. I like that. Ready and resilient. So we're rolling. The cameras are rolling as well. So I just want to say a few things to the public. These men and women in this organization is part of our Public Works team and our staff. And I'd like to say upfront that when I speak about first responders, these folks are part of it. You guys get out and about in the elements. You're some of the first to hit the streets and the byways to help our city. Many of you have to crawl down in a hole sometimes and fix something. And always, it needs to have been done 30 minutes before. It's never fast enough. We understand that. But the council and the mayor and our staff treat you and consider you guys first responders in every bit of the term. Okay? So we always talk about police and EMS and all of that. But first responders are you guys as well. When we have a storm, many of you guys are at plan and there through the event. After like a hurricane or something like that, you guys are out many times before the storm has even passed. Taking care of our city, picking up our city, really taking care of our citizens. And I want to thank you for that. This week is more to me than just Public Work Week. I know it happens every year, and we want to stop and congratulate and talk about it and highlight it. And part of what I'm trying to do now is make sure that people understand that you guys are valuable assets to this community. And without you, many of the things that we enjoy, water, sewer, drainage, good streets, just wouldn't happen. Period. It wouldn't be there. And you guys take care of all that for us. And I know I've missed a few things in the process of that. But you guys do a great job. And I'd like to read this proclamation. "Public Works Professionals Focus on Infrastructure Facilities and Services That Are Vital Importance to Our Community and to the High Quality of Life and Well-Being of the Citizens of Pearland. And Whereas These Infrastructure Facilities and Services Could Not Be Provided Without the Dedicated Efforts of Public Works Officials Who are Responsible for Protecting and Improving Our Water Supply, Quality and Treatment, Streets and Drainage, Rights of Ways, Environmental Services, Public Buildings, and Other Structures and Facilities for Our Citizens. And Whereas It Is the Public's Interest for All Citizens in the City of Pearland to Gain Knowledge of and to Maintain an Ongoing Interest and Understanding of the Importance of Public Works in Our Community. And Whereas the Efficiency of the Qualified and Dedicated Personnel Who Staff All Public Works Departments Are Influenced by Our Citizens' Concerns and Understanding of the Importance of the Work They Perform. Whereas the Year 2022 Marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week Sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Be it Now and Now, Therefore, I Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Pearland, Do Hereby Proclaim the Week of May 15th through the 21st, 2021, as National Public Works Week." And just encourage our citizens to acquaint themselves with what you guys do, the importance of what you do. And I would ask our citizens, when you see you guys, pat you on the back, say thank you, because what you do is invaluable for our community. And again, I just want to thank you for what you do.
Mayor, thank you very much. On behalf of all 176 Public Works employees, thank you very much for recognizing this time. These gentlemen, ladies for our department do a tremendous work. And I'll just rattle them off, because there are so many different departments within Public Works. We have asset management that we're building. We have fleet, facilities, streets and drainage. We have water, wastewater infrastructure, right-of-way maintenance, traffic control. And I think, I mean, we can keep rattling all the way down. But it is amazing. What's that? We have fire hydrant maintenance. We have water maintenance, water meter infrastructure. So I just want to say, all of you, it is a pleasure to be able to serve alongside y'all. I would say between 600 to 800 million dollars. Easy. But you remember, we're in the process of building now $170 million wastewater treatment plant. And we're doing upgrades to all those. So I'm probably gonna be shy. I would be pushing probably close to about over a billion dollars. And I also want to include too, we also include engineering, which is drainage. And we also include projects that builds everything that everybody gets to enjoy. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. There you go. All right. Welcome to City Council Regular Meeting Agenda, Monday, May 9, 2022, at 6:34 PM. Calling this meeting to order. If you would, please stand. And we're going to be led in our invocation by Councilmember Owens, followed by our pledges by Councilmember Carbone.
All right. Bow your heads with me, please. And we'll offer up a word to the Lord and give him thanks. And that's what we really want to do. We should start every meeting that we have, which we do, with a pipeline up to the Lord and actually thanking Him for everything that He's able to do for us. And let us get up in the morning and function during that day. And it's a blessing for us to be able to do it. We pray for all of our people here that's here with us tonight, and pray for a safe trip home. And we pray for all the responders that we have. And I think the mayor mentioned tonight that it was just not police and fire, but it's Republic Works people as abundant of what makes this city run each and every day. We ask for prayers and blessings to be with them and be with our families. And thank you, Lord, for having us a good weekend this weekend, for Mother's Day, and knowing just how much that we really appreciate our mothers and what they do for us. And we ask all these blessings. In your name, Lord, I'm in.
If you join me in the, with the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right. Thank you for that. Roll call and certification of quorum. We have members Hernandez and Little, I do know, will be absent from the chambers the rest of the evening. Member Cam Carr should be here in just a couple of minutes. He texted. He was five minutes out. All other members are present, and so we do have a quorum barely. Nobody can leave the room, or we'll break quorum until we have another member here. So just until we get that one more member in. So moving forward in our agenda, citizens' comments. I have two that have signed up just to speak under general comments. And then I have one that has signed up to speak to a specific item, and I will call their name at that time. First up, we have Mr. Jimmy Davis. Mr. Davis, build the podium, name and address, and you'll have the three minutes up on the clock. And welcome to City Hall.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combs Hill Street. Councilman, Cycle 12 will be forced to pay 64 days of water consumption in August. That's more than 9,000 accounts. The second bill we pay that month will be for a meter read that's billed 21 days after the read happens, almost within AWWA standards. Nobody else in all of Pearland must suffer this. You're putting a major hardship on a quarter of your account holders all because of 3230. I'm asking you to correct this injustice and protect your constituents. Don't make us suffer financial harm because of the problem the city created that we had nothing to do with. The same month this council's putting the hardship on all of Cycle 12, you want to give a special favor to Cycle 11, the biggest cycle that's a third of all accounts, and give away more than a million dollars in services to them. The August 31 bill that's due in September, and the only bill they pay that month, will only be for water consumption above the base and sewer above the base. No base water, sewer, trash, or mud surcharge, all because of 3230. This current council's already cost the enterprise fund more than a million dollars in revenue earlier this year. I ask you, don't cost us another million plus. To the two new councilmen-elect who are sitting in here tonight, who said they'd fix this issue, I call on you, when you take the bench, to put this on the agenda and to move away from 3230. I respect some current councilmen are worried about the hardship put on people by moving away from 3230 and producing a catch-up bill for $20. But that is why waiving late fees for six months would alleviate that burden. Those that can't pay the extra bill in full can have six months to pay it. Cycles 11, 12, and 13 will all be within AWWA standards by the time they pay the bill due in December or January. You can fix this by late June, early July. Avoid the harm on Cycle 12 and the lost revenue for Cycle 11. I'd like to point out that based on 3230, some cycles will be on 3230, while some cycles will be on once-a-month meter reads billed within standards. If the city's prepared to run two different rate structures, as well as read and billing schedules, then perhaps you can get Cycle 12 off 3230 before we suffer the hardship of paying 64 days of water consumption in the month of August. If they're not prepared to do that, then are they planning to allow two cycles to have a catch-up bill later this year? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next up, we have Mr. Joseph Coza. Same thing. Name and address for the record, and three minutes is up on the screen.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Coza. Address 2814 South Main Street. About a week, week and a half ago, I had an inquiry from a constituent regarding a letter about a flood issue. Very next day, I got 12 letters regarding the same thing. Now, this letter was from the city engineering department. It says, "Property owner, owners, 2814 Main Street." And it has a suite number. Now, I don't think suites own property. I think property owners own property. The letter goes on to say, "Repetitive loss analysis area. Dear property owner, owners. As part of the City of Pearland's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, community rating system, the engineering department is evaluating properties that have experienced repetitive flood damage. This analysis will include the review of all previous flood data and studies conducted in specific locations. Repetitive loss area analysis involves the collection of the following property level data: building permit records, including application and associate records, structure and site elevation information, elevation certificate survey if available, tax ID, lot, and parcel number, building structure and property value on record, assessed value, replacement value, or both, age of structure, building codes, flood plane, development regulation exceeding minimum standards, historical flood event information when events occur, amount of damage to structure, etc. In addition, City of Pearland staff may visit several properties to survey the flood risk and take photographs. Property owners are encouraged to provide any relevant flooding information. The survey crews will be looking at the type and condition of the foundation, drainage patterns on the lot, and whether outside mechanical equipment is elevated." patterns on the lot, and whether outside mechanical equipment is elevated. The results of the repetitive loss area analysis will include a review of mitigation alternative approaches for the property protection measures of drainage improvements where feasible. Draft of the report will be posted to the City Flood Plan website under the Flood Protection Information Section and will be available for public comment. Once the analysis is complete and has been adopted by City Council, a copy of the report will be obtained from the City Secretaries Department by calling 281-652-1900. You can help the City of Pearland perform this analysis by completing a flood protection survey by May 31st. Questionnaire can be accessed by website or by QR code below. If you have any questions, please email address. Sasha Bouchette, CFM, Stormwater Coordinator. My question is, why in the world did I get 12 notices for one piece of property? Might not seem like a lot, but it's 53 cents, it's approximately $6.50. We have this type waste going on in the city right now? Where else, and how much more do we have? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coza. Moving on, and that's Madam Secretary, we didn't have any other notices come in for citizens to be heard? Okay, just making sure before we move on. Moving forward in our agenda, we are in the consent agenda. Is anyone looking to remove anything from the consent? Not seeing any. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote. Oh, excuse me, I need Mr. Orlando, would you present items A through M?
Absolutely. Consideration and possible action on the consent agenda, items A through M, so moved.
Tag it. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, moving forward to new business, new business item number one. Member Carbone, would you present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action, Resolution R 2022-109, so moved.
Tag it. Into, we have a motion and a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, good evening. This is following up on a suggestion that was made when we had the last budget amendment, and that is for a rename of the property that the city owns and maintains on Country Place Parkway, formerly known as, well, currently known as the West Side Events Center, trying to keep consistent and a broader view of things. We are suggesting Pearland Community Center, and that's actually from the Parks Advisory Board, polling them and discussing that, but wanted to get this back in front of you with the people that had suggested it, so for your entertainment consideration tonight.
Sounds good. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I just had a quick comment. I think this is a good change and very welcome, especially as is mentioned, moving the word "side," which is widely perceived by people as divisive. I would only say, especially changing both things, changing it from events center to community center, which I think is definitely more accurate, but I think it's probably going to be less clear to people where it is, and so I think in terms of being consistent, as Clay said, I would offer a friendly amendment that maybe the West Pearland Community Center makes a little more sense, just as a cardinal direction, so folks kind of have a sense of where that is.
Tag it.
We have a, did you actually make a motion on that?
No, but I will.
Okay. I know I got a second, and I go, I don't think I actually heard a motion. Sorry about that. So you're making a motion to amend that?
Yeah, so I would, I mean, I was open to any kind of discussion, but I think we kind of talked, we kicked back a couple of ideas last time, and I think this is a good idea. I would just offer a friendly amendment to make the name change to the West Pearland Community Center.
And we had a second on that. So we're into discussion on a amending motion, motion to amend to rename it West Pearland Community Center. So any questions, comments from council on that? No.
Mayor, if you want, would you mind maybe just hear from Kerry, just to make sure we're not missing any signals or anything on that? I don't know if there's any.
Yeah, was there anything from the Parks Board or the OJ Board that was discussed?
This, not, not from, the names that we considered and that we reviewed with our Parks Board were the Pearland Activity Center, Pearland Community Center, and then also Pearland Event Center, and they were all in favor of a community center, and we don't currently have any other community centers. We have a recreation center, and so their thought was in not including the West, or by including West might mean that there was more than one.
Okay. Certainly, this is a move, move away, and I agree, removing side, you know, and throughout our community is a good, is a good move, less divisive, directional. To me, one way or the other, doesn't make a big difference to me. I think moving away, it's certainly not an event center, it's more of a community center. I do like activity center, that's kind of appropriate for the, for the use, but hearing no other questions. Council, we're going to vote on the motion to amend first, so Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on that.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion to amend carries five to zero.
All right, so we now have an amended motion, so any other questions, comments on that?
Just maybe a tangential comment, the library is still the West Side Library, correct?
It's West Pearland.
West Pearland Library.
Okay. Yeah, we had, when we went to name it, we were able to
Remove the side.
Not have "side" in it when we named it, so that's correct.
Yes, just a question for timing, I know we've got the concerts going on and all that, and I'm fine with staff discretion on whenever it makes sense to roll out the new naming, let's not have to go out and reprint stuff.
So we'll draft a full communication plan identifying all of the, the locations and that the name is communicated, and we'll put timelines for each of those, and it'll coincide with the installation of the new marquee that'll be installed outside the building.
Okay, thank you. Do we know roughly when that new marquee sign would be done? I know we put that in the amendment to, excuse me, the budget amendment. Do we know roughly how long it'll be for the sign and all that?
Right now, we're working with the vendor to update, we were, we were waiting on the name, but they're going to redo all of the drawings and submit that information to us and at that point, then we'll get a timeline on fabrication for the sign. And to answer your question for Concerts in the Park, it won't interfere with any of that.
All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero, item is amended.
All right, thank you for that. Moving to new business item number two, Mr. Kamkar, would you place that on the table, please?
Consideration and possible action, Resolution R 2022-2UP22-05, so moved.
Tag it. We have a motion and a second. As we go to staff report, we do have one citizen to speak on this, but I'll give the staff report first, and then we'll go to Mr. Eskine.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a follow-up on a public hearing that was held at the last council meeting on a request for a CUP to add three single-family homes in the Old Town District, approximately in the area of the Sullivan Brothers Project. After the close of the public hearing, the consideration of the item was postponed to allow the applicant time to review and consider the proposed conditions recommended by staff, which included requiring rear-loaded garages to come off the alley to meet the same style what will be developed down there generally, as well as tying into the regional stormwater drainage system. The applicant is here to answer any questions. He is generally open to the conditions, but does have some concerns with regard to the timeline of that. I have updated him on the fact that the engineering for the project has been completed, it's simply coming down to finalizing financial terms of funding the infrastructure, but I do believe he has some comments he would like to make to council.
Okay, before we do that, I need him to sign up to speak, so if we can get him a form, I'll let him do that, that's no problem. We do have one citizen to speak on this, Mr. Paul Eskine. Say again? The applicant speak, oh, after the applicant speak. Right, right now, the only way the applicant could speak is if we ask him a question, because he's not signed up to speak.
Sorry about that. Paul Eskine, Houston Aircraft Instruments and Passau Enterprises, 2519 Park Avenue. We had come up last time and were, gave our reasons for being against the project. It seems as though, listening to the staff, that those problems have been worked out with the back-loaded garages and coordinating with the Sullivan Brothers, so as long as all that continues and such, then we would be having no problem with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eskine. We'll now move to questions and comments from City Council. I'd like to call him, but I don't have a speaker sheet.
You can ask him a question.
Yep.
Sir, do you have anything to add with respect to your project?
Yep, there you go.
Yes, sir.
My name is Shaheen Kotami, I'm a builder and general contractor. I live at 810 Walnut Bend in Houston, 77042. Regarding this project, I have considered it in great detail over the past couple of months or so, and I have come to the conclusion that at this point, we do not have a choice but to comply with the two conditions that have been put set forth for us. However, I do have a great concern, as I mentioned the last time that we were here, regarding the timing of the back alley to be completed and ready for use. If everything goes as planned, starting next week, redesigning, city review and permit construction, in about 14, 15 months, these homes will be ready. Now, do we have any kind of assurance or timeline that the back alley will be available to us at that time? Otherwise, we would not be able to sell these houses, and with the mortgage interest and insurance and taxes, every month, that will take a big chunk out of the profit at the end, if there's any left. So, also regarding the redesigning, the entire plans, again, as mentioned last time, it will cost us about $30,000, $35,000 to do it, because we have to go back to square one. So, I was wondering, and I would like to request to see if the city would compensate us, and perhaps in a form of waiving the fee for using the regional detention or a part of the permit fee to accommodate us for all the costs that we have to incur for redesigning.
Sir, I think I could probably address that. The, the, the issue that you have is that the design preceded the conditional use permit application, and to be frank, your consultant should have known that the conditional use permit, the right to use the property, because there is a CUP, should proceed the design. So if there is an issue that is required in the conditional use permit, or the use is not allowed at all, which sometimes happens, then, then they don't proceed with design without that authorization. Certainly not the city's responsibility to compensate for that, for lack of a better term, mistake. And I know that that puts you in an awkward position, because it's not something that you would have known personally, but consultants should have. And so I think that's probably a discussion you should have with them, but I don't think there's a mechanism for us to augment your design costs that would be fair to the many other citizens that have to apply for CUPs that get them denied with some design in place.
Member Kamkar?
Yes, Mayor. What were the two requirements? It's been two weeks, and I just want to make sure that we're...
The two conditions were, one, the applicant shall provide rear-loaded garages with access from the alley. Development of the property shall be coordinated with adjacent developer to ensure timing of improvements. And two, the applicant shall design their plan to utilize the regional stormwater drainage system and coordinate destruction of their improvements with the adjacent developer.
I, everybody knows my favorite word is drainage, there's no, there's no ambiguity there. I'm going to have, we're not going to waive the stormwater fee, I just don't see that as a reasonable request. What I do find is reasonable is, we are slowing down, the 30-year interest rate is now north of five. I work with builders and developers regularly, they are slowing down, and so it is hard to entail risk of, you can only do something if person B does their thing, and that, I think, is unreasonable. What, can we put a shot clock if whatever doesn't show up, Sullivan decides to pull up sticks or pause for a year, he has to sit? What are the reasonable parameters or guardrails that lets him move forward if he has money that he wants to go put in the ground?
The CUP is good for one year, he has, he has to pull a permit with one year or the CUP expires, or he can come back for an extension.
But if Sullivan Brothers doesn't go in, because you're asking him to coordinate with Sullivan Brothers and their improvements. If Sullivan decides tomorrow to pause for 365 days, he has to wait for them. That's, that's what it sounds like to me, Darren, am I missing this? That he has to coordinate, and if they don't move forward, who is he to coordinate with?
There's nobody, if, he can't force them to coordinate with him.
He needs some level of redress. He needs some level of redress, because if Sullivan decides 20 days from now to stop, it's really unfair for this guy to be put in a position where he has to coordinate with somebody who doesn't want to do work.
You could add a third condition, that if work isn't begun within a certain timeframe, that his original plans, I didn't move forward.
I would recommend you put a shot clock, that if you grant and they don't start by a certain date, that he can move forward. I don't think it's reasonable that he has to be compliant. Home builders are starting to slow down, the dreaded "R" word is starting to be said, and the amount of money that Sullivan is going to have to put up if they do is, is an eight-digit number, most likely. They may decide 60 days from now to slow, and it's, if he's ready to go put, but I would tell him, he has to go do his piece then. Can't just, he can't get out of coordination if he doesn't do his piece, he probably has to go vertical. Those are my thoughts.
I think, I think one thing we could do was, we can make him, the CUP, extend the CUP for at least two years as opposed to the one year. That gives more time for him to coordinate, and then we can offer an opportunity after one year, if there's no advancement of the Sullivan plans, it can come to us automatically for, to readdress it and see if we are willing to allow him to move forward. The, the idea was that we wanted him to coordinate, so there's uniformity throughout, and if there is nothing else to be uniform with, then are we holding to a fair standard?
Right. Member Carbone?
Yeah, I guess in regards to the timing, I mean, you're welcome to build that alleyway tomorrow, I mean, as soon as you get the plans permitted, right? So, I mean, I, I understand your predicament, but at the same time, you've got a developer of these adjacent lots that's dumping eight figures on the ground in infrastructure he'll be using, so I guess if, if I was you and I wanted to speed that up, I'd go to them and, and work a deal or go build it yourself, but I, I just, I want... I wanted to ask a quick question to Darren. Member Perez just raised the question of maybe putting the, the CUP to two years as opposed to one. I know the UDC says one year, so can we automatically assign two years to that?
Lawrence, are you familiar, familiar with that section? I don't think it allows for an automatic extension.
It does not allow for an automatic extension, but it does allow a one-year extension upon request.
Okay. Member Perez, your mic, did you have a comment to that? Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Well, you know what, I'll just say, I don't disagree with Member Carbone, what Member Carbone is saying, and I don't disagree with the predicament that Member Kamkar is bringing up. I do believe that, and me, I was the one that introduced that we, we want him to coordinate with the Sullivan Brothers, but let's, I think we can, if we can approve it today, we can find a way to work with him. If there is a stall with the Sullivan Brothers, we can't automatically extend it, then make sure that there's some communication, you know, a month ahead of time, come back, let us take a look at it, let's look at the condition, do we want to reconsider if Sullivan Brothers stall? At that point, we could just say, no, we still want the alleyway, but at least we have a ti, an opportunity to kind of readdress it if the, if the condition... an opportunity to kind of readdress it if the conditions change as a matter of fair customer service to our client, which is this development.
A quick question, I guess, to staff, and I'm not sure who has the answer for this. I do know the improvements Sullivan Brothers was doing along with the EDC, I think it had been bid, or we had, like, one bidder and they decided to take it back out. Do we know the status of where all that is?
So they got two bids back, and so they're, I think it's in review right now. So it's still higher than what was anticipated, which is not unexpected, but still, that's where it's at.
Okay, so we do have bids. It would be anticipated if one of those bids is accepted the next thirty to sixty days of acceptance of one of those?
I would think we'd know the path within that time or sooner.
Okay. You want to offer a clock?
Yeah. John, are they progressing, the Sullivan folks? Are they doing everything that they need to be doing in terms of showing active momentum? Or are they just at the...
No, we, I think we're working well. We have, like I said, we have all the infrastructure plans that have been designed and approved by the city. And so really, it's just about finalizing the bids or the acceptance of the contractor. So with the new bids coming in last week, I think at this point, it's just staff sitting down and reviewing them and sitting down with the developer and coming to an agreement on the cost sharing based on the fact that they came in higher than we originally anticipated.
And that's, I'm having the same problem. I have a project that's eighteen percent up. My, I'm going to make a motion that the coordination be subject to, within six months, if Sullivan Brothers declines to move forward, he gets to, he needs to be active then. And I think the six months is reasonable, but then we need to get some level of indication from Sullivan, we're either moving forward, then you're fine. If they're not moving forward, I think a hundred-and-eighty days for him to go do what he needs to go do to start, I think is reasonable. So that'd be my motion.
Would it be that he automatically, that we automatically have it on the agenda, that he comes back and we readdress the conditional use permit and the provisions of being rear-loaded?
I would, right now, I'm assuming we're going to approve, we're going to move forward with those conditions. I would add a Romanet to the condition that he has to cooperate. If Sullivan doesn't move forward, he has six months to get started, or he has to come back.
Six months to do a front-loaded?
To go do the rear-load or whatever he needs to go do, just...
Or use the existing plans that we already submitted, which is front-loading. Because if nobody starts that project, there's no way that we can build that alleyway. That's a long alleyway between Walnut...
A front-loaded product isn't going to get approval. It's the rear-loaded product, so you'd have to come back here to come do front-loaded. Is that correct, Aaron?
That's correct. Right now, his proposal is front-loaded, which, if the council's not inclined to grant that, then this would be, the council would deny that this evening.
So then we would just have an auto, we could have an automatic trigger for six months based on what you're requesting, that it's back on the agenda for him to present to say, hey, Sullivan's not moving forward, can I do front-loaded now? And we can decide then.
If he wants to bring it back, I would probably grant him the space to be able to proceed without the coordination argument. But, here's the thing, if, with respect, the folks in the Old Town site get a front-loaded, these guys are going to all come back and give him the business. If he's rear-loaded, they're going to leave him alone. I would just say, if Sullivan doesn't go forward, he has six months to go forward, and whoever's going to ultimately build the alley, most likely Sullivan or whoever owns those lots, will be responsible to connect him. I don't think there's a scenario where the front-loading is going to be...
Yeah, I see what you're saying. So basically, I mean, he can move forward with building it without, but he...
He's not responsible for...
He just, he can't have his driveways in place until the rear-load comes to, I think we're pulling hairs a bit, but I don't, I don't know that that's, I'm fine with it. I'll second it. I don't think it's...
Anybody clear on what we just...
I was going to say, we need to have a clear motion first.
Okay, so what I believe you're saying is that the motion, the resolution right now would be, he cannot move forward until Sullivan builds the alleyways. And then that means...
Now, that's what he has.
Yes, and that, well, that's right now what I believe we're interpreting and proposing. He cannot get a permit to move forward until Sullivan has actively installed the alleyways, which means he's on permanent pause until that work is substantially complete and accepted by us. And you're saying, if it's six months from now and Sullivan's moving forward, but they stalled a bit, can he go ahead and build and get the permit and he can roll the construction time in so to save him some potential impacts of rising interest rates? I don't see how that's...
So define stalled a bit.
Well, I would say...
Sullivan gives notice that they're not proceeding forward.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think...
At the staff level or whatever.
Yeah, so I think it's the six-month kicker, to be clear. It's, he's got, if Sullivan's not moving forward within six months, we can come back and make the, make the argument to redo the CUP.
So the language would be, he can begin within, when the Sullivan Brothers have substantially completed the alleyway, or six months, whatever center.
That's for me. Staff, does that work for you in terms of what you needed to address?
We can make that work, sir.
Darren, do you have clarity on the...
I was going to ask, John, do you mind restating your understanding of that condition or the record so that that could be incorporated?
Your mic's off.
Yes, six months. If Sullivan Brothers does not begin their project within six months, then that's where I got lost.
If Sullivan Brothers gives notice, let's say that they don't intend to move forward with construction, he has six months to get started with the CUP as if they were involved. You just don't want to tie him to Sullivan if they decide not to move forward.
I think I'm a little lost now.
I did my, I'm trying here. It sounds like you're SOB.
I appreciate the effort.
But if we wrap the two, the two recommended conditions in here, and you want to come back in six months because Sullivan hadn't done anything, come back, we welcome you.
That's fine. I just, I don't want, it's hard to be tied business-wise to somebody else.
It is. So I think what you're hearing, I think what you're hearing is, let's, let's just, let's just move forward with what we have on the table today. The understanding is, in six months, if Sullivan Brothers not moving back, not moving forward, you come back here and we're going to, we're going to unlock this and get you going.
And at that time, request that we go with the existing plan, because from my understanding is that for the next six months, I cannot even start redesigning this project because Sullivan Brothers may not start their project at all. So I can request to use my existing plan.
I think, and I think what you're hearing is, at that point, we can have that discussion on whether or not it's going to be rear-loaded or front-loaded.
So we can, cannot do anything right now. I just have to sit still for six months, don't do anything. That's basically what it means.
Why can't that be discussed and able for right now to the next meeting and find out what we actually can do?
Well, we can. We postponed it from two weeks ago...
Yeah, I know.
...to allow him to look at some of the conditions that we placed on here, so...
I think what he is stating is a true condition, hey, it does seem unfair to you individually. And I don't disagree with that, to you individually. But as a city, there is commonly an opportunity where people have to wait on infrastructure to be put in place before they can move forward with development. There's a lot of people that own property along McCord that are waiting for that road to complete before they truly have frontage. So those situations are not unique. It's just, well, this situation's certainly different because it's a, for lack of a better term, PPP, where the private developer is actually building the infrastructure. It's your choice whether you want to pause for six months or not. What we're, I think what, Member Kamkar is trying to advocate for you is that if, six months, if, if there is a clear issue where you cannot move forward because Sullivan's not moving forward, come back to us and let us take a look and see if we can, you know, offer you some relief at that point. Or you can move forward now with Sullivan Brothers. I think that's the best we're going to be able to do for you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Just to clarify with staff, do we need to amend this to add the two conditions that staff outlined?
Yes, please do that.
So if I may ask, so you are granting CUP tonight, but if you decide to change the design of the project and just discuss this with Sullivan Brothers, I can do that?
If we approve the CUP, yes.
And we'll work with, bring them into contact and gain that discussion moving forward.
Do you want to make a motion to add these two?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add the two staff recommended conditions of approval.
Second, we have a motion and a motion to amend, and a second. Any other questions or comments on that? Madam Secretary, we're going to call for a vote on the amended motion to amend.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero to amend with two staff recommendations.
So we now have an amended motion. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero as amended.
All right, thank you for that. We're going to move to new business item number three. Mr. Perez, would you read that and put that on the table, please?
Sure. Mayor, consider as possible action, first reading ordinance one-four-six-two-three. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report?
Yes, Mayor, council members, this particular item was requested by the council at your last meeting. Specifically, it was requested by Councilmember Perez, and I believe seconded by Councilmember Kamkar, to move forward with a proposed amendment to the ethics ordinance. That language, based upon the discussion at that meeting, has been prepared. It's in your package this evening, and I'll pass it to the council members that requested it.
So I'll kick it to Councilmember Perez. I think this was your item initially.
Hi, Mayor. I think I said, generally, what we were trying to accomplish, there was some questions about some potential amendments that staff needed time to clarify for. But again, the concept is that for the benefit of the citizenry, you know, we put in provisions that, you know, generally state, as council members, if we own a business or own a part, part of a business or fully own a business, we cannot contract with the, with the city of Pearland. Or my proposal was a, was a six-month stall after we leave council, while, while, while we, while we are on council and then six months after. And then I think the request was to extend it to a minimum of nine months.
I guess before we get into questions, comments, we do have a citizen that would like to speak on this issue. Ms. Haas, would you, welcome to City Hall. So you know the drill, name and address, and three minutes upon the board.
Felicia Harris Haas, thirty-one-twelve St. Mac, seven-seven-five-eight-four. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to be before you again. And I just wanted to speak briefly on this one matter. It's really a question of what is your intent? What is council's intent? And if, if the intent is clear, what is the language that's going to carry that intent forward? And then, and then thirdly, what is the enforcement mechanism to make sure that when the law is in place, it actually does what it's intended to do? So those are my, my layers of the onion. Firstly, I heard Councilmember Perez mention that the intent was to prohibit a council member while on council or after he or she leaves council from their business, doing business with the city. The language that's in this ordinance, I would submit, perhaps doesn't capture any of that. Language in the ordinance captures a relationship between the council member and the city. I would ask the council to pay close attention to that language and perhaps even expand the notion that include the particular council member, no contract with the council member, but also with the business of the council member, not simply the council member. And I'd submit that because the language says the city should not enter into a contract with a former member of city council, not with the business that a city council, a former city council member has a substantial interest in. And that's a very important, significant difference if it is the intent of council to preclude that kind of relationship. Number one. Number two, the enforcement provision. As I read the code, section two-point-nine-one, it's entitled sanctions for violation of this article, and that is the particular article that this falls under. And it deals with city officials, former city officials and candidates. The question is, is what is a city official? For example, and what standing does the city have to take against a former city official? And the provisions in this particular statute simply talk about the review panel giving a minor violation and an admonition. The question for council is, is that a sufficient, a sufficiently worded, scoped enforcement provision to actually get, get the intent of what you're trying to achieve here accomplished? And I will submit that perhaps it's not, and I, and I could submit some additional ideas if you're, if you're curious on what those are. But I would ask council to look very closely at, what is the intent? Are you achieving it? And if you're not achieving, if you are going to achieve it, how are you going to enforce it effectively? Then I want to talk about section B of this provision, where it says, a former member of city council should not represent for compensation, et cetera, et cetera. Clarification on what representation is, because my understanding is, is that there may be certain instances of which a former council member's business or a current council member's business is a subcontractor. Is that representation? And if it isn't, is this provision broad enough to capture even that relationship to protect the citizens against the kind of ethics violations that the council is wanting to address? Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think all good questions?
I can, I guess I could address it. I'll speak to my business, specifically, Ms. Haas. So my intent is that theoretically, my business could, or I as a council member could, in the tailing end of my council term, manipulate, for lack of a better word, the timing of a particular project moving forward so that I may have an opportunity to bid on it. Certainly, that's not in the citizen's best interest. The idea of the ordinance, the intent of the ordinance is to chill any type of behavior such as that. My, my belief with six months is sufficient time between the time we take action on something and the time that that action is contracted. The other council members believe nine months was more sufficient, and I'm, I'm okay with that, with that amendment. But that's the intent, is to ensure that even up until the last day, this is my last meeting, where I vote on anything of significance. Even up until this last meeting, there is clear and concise understanding that we are only able to operate in the city's best interest. That's, that's the intent of the provision. That's why I proposed it. Certainly, my type of business is the one that more than likely be challenged by this ordinance, because my type of business does commonly and directly contract with the, with the city of Pearland. Again, the intent. To section B, that, that portion was already in, that was a no lobbying clause. I think that is to target the council member, not the council member's business. Again, if the council member works for a business that does, that does work within the city, and we put in a lobbying clause that says that council member's business cannot, the entire business cannot lobby within the, within the city, then that means the entire business is frozen from doing any work within, within the city, not for the city. And I think that would be, at least, I'll just again speak from my, from my business perspective. I have plenty of employees, they're all competent, they can all speak. They don't actually want me to come and be participant on projects anymore, anyway. But if somebody contracts for us, for us to do a retail center somewhere on Pearland Parkway, potentially, a member of my business could meet with staff, lobby council, discuss a conditional use permit or a zone change or something like that, and allow that project to serve, to be served by the client, but the council member cannot do that. I could not use my weight as a council member to call one of the other members that I may be friendly with and say, hey, would you look at this positively? It would only be members of my staff. So that would be the violation, is for me to use my clout or influence that I may or may not have, but the clout and the influence as a former council member to affect or influence the outcome of, of a vote. That's that provision, I believe, and I wasn't on when that provision was added, but I believe that was the intent of that provision. So I hope that clarifies what, what the intent of what, what I was trying to do by introducing this.
Yeah, it's just a chill period, so you can't set up a potential contract that you're walking, you know, out of and into, you know, from council into, back into private business. That's, that's the intent.
It would look very bad to everybody, even if everything was clean, if on May sixteenth, I walk away from the chambers and I'm no longer a council member, and then on May eighteenth, I'm entering a contract with the city of Pearland. There is no protection preventing that from happening. I think that should be in place.
Right. And then even, even to the point, and this, not necessarily in your business, but it, you know, could be any of us, we could vote on a contract, you know, with a particular, particular business, you know, tonight, and you leave council. you know, tonight, and you leave council and go to work for that entity, knowing you had this business relationship coming, going to work for that entity immediately after coming off council and into that contract. It would prohibit that type of activity ahead of time. I think she does raise a good question, and Darren, I'll defer on any kind of enforcement mechanism, how that is enforced, and certainly any, you know, penalties associated.
Well, first of all, that's the way this ordinance was drafted. As you can see, it's a sanction provision. That's the way it was drafted, that's the way it was discussed at that time, that's what council wanted, and that is traditionally what you find in the majority of ethics ordinances, where you can be publicly reprimanded. There are other provisions in state law that have more stringent criminal provisions for like misuse of city property, things of that nature. But for instance, in this ordinance, it's actually a little stricter than state law in some respects with respect to voting on participating in matters where there may be a conflict. But again, if that is violated by a council member, then yeah, it's basically pure sanctions. And if the council wanted a different approach, we, you know, I think you'd still be limited on what you could do in that regard. This particular provision, though, was actually drafted at the council's request to put the responsibility on the city and not on the council member or the council member's business in this case. So again, it's the city, it's a prohibition for the city against doing so. And if doing so, then I think what we would find is if a contract was entered into in violation of this, then I think it would run the risk of voiding that particular contract.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, my seventeen years in the engineering business, since I'm on council, I've not let anybody that I work for come and lobby, you know, for work out of the city of Pearland on there. But you know, one of the things that concern, I mean, you know, we do have or have had people that has a subcontract with somebody that gets a contract with the city, so they not directly have it, you know, as a, and say, well, Perez, because he's sitting here beside me, and take, you know, if it's, yeah, and you're leaving. Okay, and so the thing about it, you know, is concerned about doing that, I understand on the other side, and I respect what Trent has talked about on there not being into that part of it. But I think, you know, what level do we go? Is it a person or is it subcontractor that may be a subcontractor, say, to Alex on a job or whatever, somewhere else and what have you? So I just, I guess, what level do we take that to?
I think if the contract is with the city of Pearland, the former, the current or former council member cannot contract with the Pearland, with the city of Pearland, even through a subcontract. So let's say it's an architectural contract and they're bringing in their subs, the former council member's company cannot be a part of that contract. Now, that excludes working as a consultant for a private entity that is attempting to permit something in the city of Pearland, and I know that's not what we're talking, but to the subconsultant, if I own, if somebody is getting contracted cleaning business and I own, you know, some sort of component to that, I couldn't subcontract that, try and push my company into a position where we could subcontract to that and then have some business from that, either direct contract or subcontract. It should include both, that nine-month chill period. And the one thing I would also like to add as an amendment to this is, because this can get a little bit convoluted, and there's a lot of these ordinances in place that have been, you know, kind of meshed together, that we have a yearly reminder workshop, you know, sometime annually at an appropriate time, probably determined by the mayor, where council just gets a workshop and say, hey, just a reminder, here's all the ethical ordinances that we have in place to make sure that y'all, we don't accidentally slip up through, because we're ignorant of the ordinance, we haven't read it, or there was something that we misunderstood.
Right. Do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I heard in the comments, current, I just want to make sure we're capturing that. Darren, does this language, and can we pull it up on the screen under the agenda item? I know I'm that guy. I apologize.
Yeah, I think I know where you're heading with this, and it-
As I see former, and I don't see no current, and I'd like to see current. So it's page three ninety-four of the packet, or, there we go, that's perfect. So just help me here, is this, who's covered under this and who's not? Because I don't-
Okay, if this section deals with, if you'll look at the title of that section, it's regulations applicable to former council members, city council and administrative boards. So this does not apply to current council members, and I'll get to that. If I can come back to that part in just a second, I wanted to clarify something that was mentioned just a moment ago by Councilmember Perez. When it comes to this, I think in fairness to the speaker, I think what she was indicating was that it says enter into a contract with a former member of city council that has a substantial interest in a business entity. I think what she was saying was that it should be a former member of the city council that has a substantial interest, or excuse me, or a business entity in which that council member has a substantial interest in, is what I believe she was indicating. And so that would then apply to the business and not just the council member. Do you understand where I'm coming from there?
I can agree with those terms, yeah.
Okay. So that was one item. The second item, and that's the follow-up to that, what you just asked, council member, does this apply to current council members? And the answer is no, it doesn't. If you're currently on council and you're dealing with items, that's actually earlier in the ordinance, and specifically, that's going to be in section two dash seven, seven, and two dash seven eight. There's several provisions there to apply to council members and the people in which you have family relationships with, in which there could be a conflict.
Ask a question?
And what can make this a little bit confusing is there's state law that applies to conflicts in chapter one seventy-one, and then chapter one seventy-six, a little bit different provision for reporting, and then you have our city ordinance that applies as well. And so that's what I'm saying. So yes, thank you. I mean, I'm talking about current council members. The other section dealt with former. So that's why I'm saying, right now, this ordinance applies to current council members in this other section.
Let me ask a stupid question. Is the threshold that we would be doing the former council members stringent as what the threshold is, whether it's the state or local or current council members?
It's, what we'd be applying to the former council member would be more stringent. The state law, it essentially allows a council member to participate, I mean, the council could vote on a contract with a, in which we would be entering into a contract with a council member, and the council could approve that contract, that council member would have to abstain from participation, file a conflict affidavit, and then could not participate in any discussion or vote.
I know Member Perez said he won't be here, but if we're willing to make this thrust to regain trust with the city, promote trust, we're working for the city's citizens, not ourselves, I would ask the body if we need to come to a separate amendment or if we need to do another agenda item. If we're going to put the onus on the guy who's leaving or girl who's leaving, we should be willing to do it to ourselves. And so that's just me putting thoughts out into the air. But I would like to make the amendment that you were making about changing up the business entity. So I want to go there whenever we round up our stuff.
Okay, and so would you, is your, is what you're saying is if the former council member is held to a higher standard than the current council member, you want to make sure that there's a-
I think we need to marry so that there's at least some level of even, here's what you're doing now when you're on, here's what you're doing now. Now, obviously, there's a burn-off period of nine months of cool-off, and at that point, you do whatever the heck you want. But I would tell you, it gives me some level of concern when a former guy is held to this higher standard than the person who's there, and we're trying to quote-unquote build trust. So I just put in some stuff out there.
So I think, so first off, we've got an amendment potential offer up, so let's, so before we get too clouded there, go ahead, Darren.
I was just going to say, I mean, this is obviously a first reading. I think I had a clear understanding of what would need to be done there. I can bring that back in the second reading.
So I think first off, the language here that's in red, Darren, what needs to change on there to do what?
I think right now, it says the city should not enter into a contract with a former member of city council that has a substantial interest in a business entity. I think it's, should be that essentially, and I can wordsmith it later, but essentially the gist would be that the city shall not enter into a contract with a former member of city council or a business entity in which this council member has a substantial interest.
Okay.
Because that way, that provides the broader protection. And it provides further direction to the city staff on-
Go ahead, go ahead and make that, go ahead and make that amendment.
And if I, I think we'd all up here probably think that that would be applicable to the position of the mayor as well as the council?
Yes, the mayor is a member of council.
I am a member of council, right.
All right, so just, because I'm an Aggie, I got like six letters, six words, and I forget. I'd like to make a motion that we amend the language in red, that the city shall not enter a contract with a former member of city council or a business owned by a member.
I think, well, we're using a term, a business entity, which is defined by state law.
Current and former.
If you do current, you're in a different-
It's in a different category. He's making a motion to amend based on the language that you're offering up, Darren.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have a question, comment on that amending motion?
I'll just, the other amendment that I was making, I'll make that separately. Yeah, we can keep it-
Is this something that the staff will have to regulate, of knowing everybody that submits something in here, who the, all the employees of that firm is in order to make sure?
They have to be, they have to have an ownership interest, and I think, you know, certainly there would be a way to hide it. Let's just say an architectural firm submits, they get a contract, they call ABC, you know, the MEP contractor, and then they look in the contract and say, hey, look, this, the person who's solving it or that subcontract is in violation of this ordinance, go find somebody else.
If you get to a company that's an ESOP, you may have a hundred members, and the company that's as part owner is one percent, you know?
What I would tell you, Woody, is I have a funny feeling that former council member will show up smiling real big, and the staff will recognize that person and be like, oh, well, that's great that you're here, sir, or ma'am.
And it is nine months, so it's a memory.
We have an amended, we have a motion to amend in a second on the table. Any other questions or comments on that?
Yeah, I just had a quick question about substantial interest. Reading the definition here, it looked like that we specifically mentioned ten thousand dollars in revenue or profit from that. We were talking about percentages last time, Darren, is that, is that kind of out of this definition? It's more based on the dollar amount?
I apologize. Substantial interest is defined in chapter one seventy-one, if, there's three different ways in which you can have a substantial interest. One would be if you own ten percent or more of the voting stock or shares of that business entity. If you owned ten percent or more, or fifteen thousand dollars or more of the fair market value of that business entity. And then the last way would be is if in the preceding year prior to that vote, the council member basically received more than ten percent of their gross income for that year from that business entity. Those are the three ways.
Awesome. Yeah, that's what I thought, I just, I only saw the ten thousand, and that was actually in line, so thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments on the motion to amend? We're only talking about the motion to amend to amend this language just a little bit. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we're going to call for a vote on the motion to amend.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carrbone?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero to amend.
Now, Member Perez, do you want to offer an amendment on the training portion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to offer an amendment to this, to the ethical ordinance, that there is an annual workshop amongst city council members to go over the provisions of the ethical ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on that? Obviously, to be determined at some point, and if you, that could be a workshop, it could be in connection with any number of ways that we could do that. I think this should be, we'll figure it out, the disclosure form, or you're signed off that you've read it and, or whatever.
Trust you can figure it out.
Yeah, we can figure that out. Any other questions or comments on the-
Just so you know, right now, the current ordinance requires that that happen at the time the council member gets elected, so all we would be doing is I'll go into that section and make it that it would be an annual training as opposed to at the time of their election.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. We have an annual disclosure that's about to start anyway, because we've gone over a hundred thousand in population. We could tie it to that, Darren, and we can, again, we can clean this language up on the second reading, but there's an annual disclosure of some sort, financial disclosures that we have to do. We could tie it to that. That way, it covers all of us. All right, any other questions, comments on this motion to amend?
Excuse me, Mayor. Before, this is Lawrence, over in legal. Before you proceed, there is a section two eighty-five of the ordinance regarding education and the requirements on that for tonight's meeting. I think the posting on this was limited to section two eighty-three. And if you're talking about amending section two eighty-five, we might not be in-
You're good, yeah, you're right.
Good catch, Lawrence, thanks.
You're right. So it's something we will need to discuss in the future, so, because it's only talking about two dash eight-three, correct?
That is the way the caption is posted, and so-
Okay.
The idea being that a member of the public may have only thought that was the sole section being discussed this evening.
Right. I'll recant the amendment, hoping that council, after I'm off, will bring this up upon the second reading and add it then.
Okay.
Thanks, Lawrence.
I think that's fair.
Thank you, Lawrence. You're great.
Along the same lines, I mean, we can't, it seems that we can't add, it's not as simple as current or former in the section two point, two dash eight-three, but I think I agree with Councilman Kamkar, that I agree if we're holding former council to this standard, then we need to hold current council.
Could we-
Whatever sections that needs to go in.
We do an agenda item for maybe the next meeting, play that up, because I guess you'll have a second reading on this.
What I will do, yes, we can come back with the second reading on this, and if, y'all can't vote on that tonight, but if there's, you know, enough head nods that I can work on some other changes based upon the discussion, then I can bring back that as a second amendment for the first reading on that.
I even heard that, I think with the citizen comments, that it was assumed or implied it's on, when you're on or when you leave council, so.
Yeah, I didn't even know that there was a difference between those thresholds.
No, I think that you brought up a good, you got a-
It's just different sections of the ordinance, right?
All right. Yeah, I would just add in closing that I think this is a good step in the right direction. Appreciate Member Perez bringing this forward, as was just kind of came out tonight. There is a lot of, there's a lot of room here that we could work and grow and add stuff, and so I think this should be the start of this discussion, not the end of it, and I hope the council will take that up.
That's good, a hundred percent, yeah. All right, so we're back- I guess the last item is enforcement in that section, what, two nine one? If there's anything that we can do inside state law to make the teeth better, stronger, sharper, I'd certainly like to have that discussion.
Well, I mean, we would, the assumption would be that they would enter into a contract in violation of the law, staff would have missed it, and then we would need mere punish it. I think, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't object to having a grader teeth in it, but I think the enforcement mechanism is you can't have a contract with us, now go away for the next six months, you shouldn't have asked. But yeah, if there's a, there's an intentional mistake to mislead by the council member to hide their interest in a company, then there should be more teeth, because at that point, they are being disingenuous and the staff would not have been able to catch it. For instance, you know, architect, civil engineer, don't let them know I'm on the project. Enter the contract, we'll figure it out later. I won't start work for nine months.
I think there's a, I think there's a hundred different scenarios-
Yeah, yeah.
-that come up there, but you're right, most of it's going to end up being public scolding, if you will, you know? So I would assume that if it was found out after we contracted, that the contract would be removed.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that ought to be part of the teeth, that's, you know, how many people would go through a public scolding just to get through the end and still have the contract? I mean, it should be-
Yeah, it's an automatic, it's an automatic breach of contract, and the contract is immediately resolved or dissolved.
Darren, do we have in our contracts and our clauses that, you know, if you're not in compliance with city ordinances or whatever, because then this, that becomes a catch-all if they violate the premise of the ordinance?
Yeah, but if it's a former, again, part of the teeth needs to be that the contract is then removed.
And just to clarify, that will also apply to the current council members as well.
Yeah.
As it should. Real quick, Ms. Haas, do you have a, some items on-
Just want to point a clarification on this discussion that you're having now, and it's not big. But-
But the, well, I lost the, 291 deals with city officials, former city officials, I forget what the other one was. It doesn't capture the contract for the third party. So I just want to clarify that. You're talking like, oh, well, if you break it, then the contract goes away. I haven't found a law that says that. So I would suggest that if council is going to say that's the case, you ask your city attorney to point out the law for you that does that? So you're not making assumptions based upon a conversation that doesn't have the city attorney's input.
Yeah, and again, I think.
And that would be based on terms of a conditions of the contract itself, not necessarily what's in this ordinance.
Yeah, but I think we can, I think as, as stated, I think there's lots of comment that we can even do better and cleaner on our ethics ordinance. And, and, and I think one of the things that we can do, it's not in this section, I don't believe, tonight, but, you know, some kind of a penalty clause if you're found in violation of this and we missed it, but it's found out, then, you know, it, it's a removal of that contract. And, and we can get into the legal language of that when we address it. So it sounds like we may be dusting off the ethics ordinance after tonight and, and looking at some other, some other options. So we, we have an amended motion on the table with the language that Darren offered up in that one section. Do we have any other questions or comments on this agenda item?
I just would say great work from everybody. I think this really helps. Citizens know that, that they can trust us.
I think it's strengthening the ethics ordinance and we can always do better. So with that, Madam Secretary, we're going to call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero as amended.
All right, thank you for that. We're to Mr. Owens. But before you do, Councilmember Owens, Darren, would you read this entire caption into the record?
Sure.
And then Woody, you're making the motion.
Yes, Mayor, council members, this is, as you've seen recently, some of the past resolutions that the council considers. This is declaring a public necessity for the acquisition of road right-of-way. And as you know, we're required to do this by state law and read this out loud. This particular project is the Smith Ranch Road project. And so I'm going to go ahead and read that out loud. And if council could then so move, I'll go ahead and begin. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2022 104. Resolution of the City Council, City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee title interest in certain property or road right-of-way being .0872 acres, 3,800 square feet parcel of land situated in the HTMBRR Company Survey, abstract 304, Bressory County, Texas, being out of and a portion of that certain called .3444 acre tract of land as conveyed to Southwestern Bell Telephone Company by deed executed September 10th, 1982, as recorded in volume 1692, page 678, in the deed records of Bressory County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of public road improvements on certain rural property described herein. That's it.
Member Owens? Give me to read the amendment.
No, just so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Staff report. Darren, you gave it briefly, but.
Yeah, I gave a brief one. Now, just in this particular.
Excuse me, and in this particular instance, this is a property being acquired from AT&amp;T, a small portion of right-of-way on Smith Ranch Road. Because this is a TechStop funded project, there's a few nuances there that makes this a little more challenging because TechStop has to approve all of the acquisitions. And it's not so much in this, in this particular instance, it's not so much an issue associated with the, the valuation of the property. It's more the documentation. And so because they can't come to an agreement between TechStop and AT&amp;T, we're having to move forward with the eminent domain process.
Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, back to Member Orlando, if you'd place number five, actually five and six. I guess we'll take them separately, but item five on the agenda, please.
Consideration impossible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 1613, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Just for the record, Mayor and Council, these are both properties along Bailey Road corridor that the city had annexed several years ago as part of the project at that time. The owners had the option of a, a short-term exemption from, or agricultural exemption to avoid the annexation for a period of time that has expired for these properties. And councils discussed this and from first reading, a decision was staying consistent with how the other properties in the corridor were treated to proceed with this second reading. Nothing to add.
All right, any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
And back to Mr. Carbone, would you place number six on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration impossible action, second and final reading of ordinance 1614, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any staff report?
Nothing to add, sir.
Nothing to add. Any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, moving forward in our agenda, matters removed from consent agenda, there was none. Item's other business, there is none. Item nine, mayor council issues for city council discussion, there's none on our agenda. And I will state, I had one member on executive session asked to potentially postpone this since we have new council members come in.
Yeah, Mayor, I think it's, since this is my last council meeting, I, and, well, since it's my last council meeting, I don't think it's fair to the citizenry or the future council members that I have a say in their appointees. I think it's best that this gets postponed to the next regular meeting so that the new council, as duly elected by the citizens, have an opportunity to say on who their coworkers are.
That's awful.
Mayor, the only thing I would add is the, the idea was to have discussion about possibly scheduling, getting that going, so we wouldn't lose time. If council did want to appoint, you'd have that option. But the idea was provide that flexibility to at least get things teed up for interviews.
And I would say, just also for the record and with respect, I've previously been bound to the decisions made by previous councils as it relates to members of the planning and zoning committee.
I wanted to give the council member his, his opportunity to say that. So we're going to move into executive session under 551.074 Personnel Matters Regarding Appointments to Boards and Commissions. We will adjourn into recess at 7:50. to boards and commissions, we will adjourn into recess at 7:50.